Good morning, and thank you all for joining us. But before we begin the council session today, I would like to make the following announcement. Due to the continuing threat to public health from COVID-19, city council is currently meeting remotely. We are using Microsoft's Teams to make this remote meeting possible. Instruction for how the public may view the meeting and offer public comment are included in the stated meeting notice that was published in the Daily News, the Inquirer, the Legal Intelligence of prior to the meeting, and can also be found on PHL Health Council dot com. On our note, the hour has come. The clerk will please call the roll to take attendance and members that are in attendance. Just say a couple of words to make sure that your image is displayed on the screen. Mr. Decker, please call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass.
Good morning, Mr. President, colleagues in the City of Philadelphia.
Good morning.
Councilwoman Brooks.
Good morning, Council President and colleagues in the City of Philadelphia. I am present.
Good morning.
Councilman Dom.
Good morning, Council President, colleagues, and the City of Philadelphia President.
Good morning.
Councilwoman Gauthier.
Morning, President.
Good morning.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson.
Good morning, Council President. Good morning, colleagues, and good morning, Philadelphia.
Good morning.
Councilman Green.
Good morning, Council President. Good morning, colleagues. Good morning to the City of Philadelphia, where it's always sunny, even on a rainy day.
Good morning.
Councilwoman Jim.
Good morning, Council President. Good morning, colleagues. I am present.
Good morning.
Councilman Jones.
Good morning, Mr. President, colleagues, Philadelphia. I am president. Present.
Councilman O.
Good morning, Council President. Good morning, colleagues. I'm present.
Good morning.
Councilman O'Neil.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Councilwoman Parker.
Good morning, Mr. President, colleagues, and viewing public.
Good morning.
Councilwoman Quinones Sanchez.
Good morning, Council President. Good morning, colleagues. I am present.
Good morning.
Councilman Scola. Councilman Thomas.
Good morning, Council President. Good morning, colleagues. Good morning to the listening public. I'm present.
Good morning.
Council President Clark.
And good morning to you all. You have established our forms, so council will now come to order. To give our invocation this morning, the chair recognizes Bishop E. Malone Porterfield of Four Memorial Temple. He is here today as a guest of Councilwoman Bass. I would ask all members and guests to please bow your heads for the invocation.
Our Lord, how excellent is thy name in all the earth. Great Creator of all in existence, we come to you, O God, through thy son's name on behalf of the people of Philadelphia, the mayor and his cabinet, our council president, this body of city council persons. I thank you for the willingness to acknowledge you and allow you to direct their paths. God, this morning we humbly come before you and lift the city before you. We ask you to forgive us for neglecting the one greatest challenge you gave us, and that was to love our neighbor as ourselves. We have failed at this, and we realize that the downward spiral of events that have happened has been because the love of many has waxed cold. We want peace in our city, and we're coming to you, acknowledging our error, and asking you to help us to love each other. We are all your children. You created us, and we cannot do this without you. Help us, dear Lord. We have embraced so many years of divisions until we are divided, seeking a solution. Lord, I pray today that you would unite us. Unite us so that we can be different and love one another. Unite us so that we can be different and have different opinions, but love one another still. Unite us even though we may believe one thing over another, but God, help us to love one another. Dear God, we need protection in this city. Protect us with beings that are unseen agents of your bidding that will drive out powers of darkness, cover our citizens, and, Lord, protect the police as they do their job in our city. Lord, look on our children and cover them. Please bless their lives. Lord, be strength for every family that has been impacted by the violence they have encountered. We thank you for this august body of council persons. This morning, we ask that you crown them with wisdom to make decisions and produce policy that will turn things around. Thank you for giving them the power to bring about change so that every citizen in this city will be made the better. Lord, raise this city again from the ashes of turmoil, and let the world see this city that has welcomed unity and love as its agenda. Bless this council, and we will thank you for blessing them. This is your servant's prayer on behalf of this council and this city, and I come to you in the name of your dear son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Bishop, thank you so much for your spiritual guidance this morning. We really appreciate it, and we really need it. We really appreciate you being here. Thank you so much.
Thank you for the opportunity. Thank you.
And our next order of business is the approval of the Journal of the Meeting on Thursday, March 31st, 2022. And the chair recognizes Councilwoman Scola.
So thank you, Mr. President. I move that the Journal of the Meeting on Thursday, March 31st, 2022 be approved.
Second.
It has been moved in properly second that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, March 31st, 22 stand approval. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and the Journal is approved. And our next order of business is request for leave of absence. And the chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the members of council, a leave of absence is requested for Councilmember Johnson.
Chair thanks to Councilwoman, and leave shall be granted for Councilmember Johnson. Our chair again recognizes Councilwoman Parker for a motion concerning certain legislative matters that may arise during the course of today's session of council and that were not listed on the calendar circulated prior to today's session.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that any of the following matters, if considered today, may be added to the agenda for this session of council and, as required by law, subsequently published on an amended agenda after the consideration of those matters: Resolutions authorizing hearings, amendments to bills on first reading, the reconsideration of a bill vetoed by or recalled from the mayor, resolutions taking substantive action to be voted on in this session, a motion to withdraw a bill or resolution that is not on the calendar, and a motion placing a bill or resolution on or returning a bill or resolution from the suspension calendar that is not listed on today's calendar. The purpose of this motion is to provide the public with a notice concerning possible actions by council that arose too late to be included on the calendar that was published prior to today's session.
Second.
Thank you. It has been moved in properly second that the legislative matters stated by Councilwoman Parker may be added to the agenda for today should those matters arise during the course of this session of council. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 All. Those opposed, ayes have it, motion carries. And our next order of business is communications. And I would ask the clerk to please read the messages from the mayor or any other messages and communications that he may have in his possession. Mr. Decker?
From the mayor to the president and members of the council of the City of Philadelphia. I am transmitting for the consideration of your honorable body. A resolution approving the appointment of Deborah McCarthy to the Philadelphia Water, Sewer, and Stormwater Board and an ordinance amending section 12701 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Designation of Bicycle Lanes to authorize a bicycle lane on Woodland Avenue from the Woodlands driveway to the VA Medical Center driveway and making associated changes to parking regulations within the same limits, all under certain terms and conditions.
That's it. Well, thank you, Mr. Decker. And our next order of business is the introduction of bills and resolution. And by way of a reminder, we are asking all resolutions, including privileged resolution, be placed on the final passage calendar for the next session of council unless they are being referred to committee. In our current remote environment, this procedure will provide the appropriate opportunity for public comment. And I would like to thank you in advance for your anticipated cooperation. Mr. Decker, please read the titles of the legislation that's being offered today by our members.
Councilwoman Parker offers two resolutions. On behalf of Council President Clark, a resolution authorizing the commissioner of public property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority, these conveying fees simple title to 2100 North Sixth Street and 2104 through 06 North Sixth Street in the Fifth Councilmatic District of the City of Philadelphia.
Next week's calendar.
And on her own behalf, Councilwoman Parker offers a resolution recognizing Rick Bloomingdale upon his retirement as president from the Pennsylvania AFL-CIO.
Next week's calendar.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson offers three resolutions. On behalf of Council President Clark, a resolution honoring and congratulating Philadelphia natives, Questlove Jasmine Sullivan and the Philadelphia Orchestra for a Stellar 2022 Award Season, collectively winning an Oscar and four Grammys for outstanding contributions to music and film.
Next week's calendar.
On her own behalf, Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson offers a resolution recognizing April 22, 2022 as Earth Day in the City of Philadelphia.
Next week's calendar.
And Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson and Quinones Sanchez offer a resolution celebrating the selection of My Broken Language, a memoir written by Philadelphia-born Pulitzer Prize-winning author, Juliara Alegría Juiles for the 2022 One Book, One Philadelphia program.
Next week's calendar.
Councilman Green offers a resolution recognizing April 2022 as Autism Acceptance and Awareness Month in the City of Philadelphia and commending the creators of the Autism 365 Collection at the Winfield Library.
Next week's calendar.
Councilman Dom offers a resolution calling on Mayor James F. Kenny, Governor Tom Wolf, and the Pennsylvania General Assembly to use all powers of their offices to declare a state of emergency and seek available emergency relief resources from the state and federal governments through the Pennsylvania Emergency Management Agency, PIMA, and the Federal Emergency Management Agency, FEMA, to address the humanitarian emergency in the Kensington neighborhood of Philadelphia, including but not limited to resources that will provide hazard mitigation, access to health-related treatments, neighborhood cleanup and remediation, wraparound social services for neighborhood residents and persons experiencing homelessness and substance use disorders, and all other necessary assistance to maintain a safe and healthy environment for Philadelphians living or working in the area.
Next week's calendar.
Councilwoman Gauthier offers two bills entitled an ordinance amending-
Mr. Decker, I'm sorry. Just seen it. Councilman Dom, did you want to be recognized? Yeah, I'm sorry. Mr. Decker, hold off one second. Councilman Dom, you're on mute. Can't hear you. Still not hearing you.
Morning, District Attorney.
Councilmember Jones.
Yeah. Councilman Dom, not hearing you. No, still not.
Might have to reboot.
Yeah, well, Councilman Dom, why don't you, uh, figure that out and come back? And, uh, we'll let you speak, um, hopefully before we conclude the introduction of bills and resolution. I'm sorry, Mr. Decker, to interrupt you. You were at-
Councilwoman Gauthier, Mr. President. Offers two bills entitled an ordinance amending section 12701 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Designation of Bicycle Lanes to authorize a bicycle lane on Woodland Avenue from the Woodlands driveway to the VA Medical Center driveway and making associated changes to parking regulations within the same limits.
For the committee?
And also an ordinance amending chapter 16400 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Surplus Properties by adding criteria for evaluating non-competitive dispositions.
For the committee?
Councilman Thomas offers two resolutions. On behalf of Council President Clark, a resolution honoring and congratulating Dawn Staley for co-team the 2022 Women's NCAA Championship Basketball Team, the University of South Carolina Gamecocks.
Next week's calendar.
And on his own behalf, a resolution honoring and congratulating Champion of the Week, Northeast High School Wrestling Team on their successful 2021-2022 season and winning the Public League Championship Title.
Next week's calendar.
Councilman Scola offers one bill entitled an ordinance amending section 14513 of the Philadelphia Code entitled DOD Transit Oriented Development Overlay District to designate additional transit-oriented development transit stations.
For the committee?
Councilman O offers two resolutions. Inside of the resolution recognizing and honoring Judge Doris Smith Ribner for her years of service to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania as the first Black woman elected to a statewide judicial seat on the occasion of Women's History Month.
Next week's calendar.
And a resolution recognizing and honoring Michael McGady and Matthew Mulholland, police officers in the 39th District for their swift, lifesaving response to a fire in North Philadelphia.
Next week's calendar.
There are no other bills or resolutions being offered today by the members, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Yes, thank you very much, uh, Council President. I just wanted to clarify if anyone is confused. Yes, I did introduce the resolution last week, but we received an edit, um, after I had introduced it and I became aware of it. And we would like it to be just so very perfect. Um, and so I am reintroducing a corrected version of the resolution. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Um, Councilman Dom, are you ready?
I hope so. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, we can hear you. Chair recognizes Councilman Dom.
Thank you, Council President, and thanks for the opportunity to speak today on this resolution, calling on the mayor, governor, and the Pennsylvania General Assembly to use all powers of their offices to declare a state of emergency in the Kensington neighborhood and bring about a multi-jurisdictional, operational, and financial approach to this humanitarian disaster. I authored this resolution and introduced it today alongside my colleagues, council members Maria Quinones Sanchez and Councilman Mark Scola. They have put a tremendous amount of time and energy and resources into addressing the many complex issues that have consumed Kensington for far too long. Despite the city's countless efforts and those efforts made by so many amazing community-based organizations and residents, we must acknowledge that our approach isn't getting the results Kensington deserves. This has become a disaster area of epic proportions, a disaster that requires relief efforts that far exceed the capacity and resources of the City of Philadelphia's government. This is not a problem created solely by the people of Philadelphia, and nor should the solutions fall on our backs alone. Unfortunately, Philadelphia is home to the worst urban opioid crisis in America. And Kensington, the 19134 ZIP code, is the epicenter. The neighborhood surrounding the Kensington Avenue corridor has for decades languished under the weight of a thriving drug trade along with criminal activity, violence driven by territorial illegal drug sales, and people experiencing substance use disorders, mental illness, and homelessness. The streets are occupied with open drug use and littered with trash, dangerous needles all over the place, and other toxic waste. People are sleeping in their own feces, walking around barely alive and actively killing themselves on our city streets. This is unbearable. Year after year, families, friends, and neighbors from all over the region continue to lose their loved ones because of Kensington's grip, which becomes impossible for many to escape, no matter the age, the gender, or the race. The number of lives lost is shocking and heartbreaking. In 2018, 1,116 people died of overdoses in Philadelphia. In 2019, 1,150 people died of overdoses in Philadelphia. And in 2020, keeps going up, 1,214 overdose deaths in our city. And in 2021, the total figures, which have not been for the full year yet, but we know for six months, we're at 640, died from a drug overdose in just the first six months, outpacing the prior year's figure. No one here is surprised to know that Kensington and the 19134 ZIP code continue to lead the city in these overdose-related deaths. The stats alone indicate that the scale of this crisis exceeds the city's capacity. We must seek all available emergency relief resources from the state and federal governments through the Pennsylvania Emergency Management Agency and the Federal Emergency Management Agency to address the humanitarian disaster in Kensington. We need our state and federal partners to provide us with access to resources that will provide hazard mitigation, access to health-related treatments, neighborhood cleanup and remediation, wraparound social services for neighborhood residents and those experiencing homelessness and substance use disorders. Ultimately, we need all necessary assistance to maintain a safe and healthy environment for Philadelphians living or working in this area. We all want to achieve the same goals here, and the time is now for us to take bold, unprecedented actions. We support the mayor's office and the initiatives set forth by the administration to tackle this ongoing issue. Today, we continue to stand with Mayor Kenny and urge him to support our call to state and federal officials to declare a state of emergency in Kensington. This will provide access to a level of support that is required to change the direction of Kensington. When you think about the disasters that have occurred across the United States, those disasters have led to federal and state emergency declarations with FEMA operational support and disaster relief efforts. Just think about some of the floods, the hurricanes, or tornadoes. Some just last an hour, or a day, or maybe even a week. But the federal government brings in FEMA resources at every turn. When you compare these disasters and recent pandemic efforts with what has occurred in Kensington for decades, over 10,000 days, there's no comparison. FEMA and emergency relief efforts is what's needed here, and it's needed now. Again, I want to thank Councilmembers Sanchez and Councilmember Scola along with all my colleagues who have cosponsored this resolution. This is the beginning of a new approach and one that is long overdue for Kensington. Kensington deserves this. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilmen. Uh, as was said before, uh, that will be on next week's calendar. Thank you, Council. Mr. Decker, does that conclude the introduction of bills and resolutions?
It does, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Uh, while we have no report on committee today. Next order of business is the consideration of calendar. There being no bills on the first reading calendar, the chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker for the purpose of calling up resolutions and bills on the second reading and final passage calendar.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. The following resolutions and bills are being called up from the second reading and final passage calendars today. They are numbers 220301, 220302, 220304, 220305, 220306, 220307, 220308, 220309, and 220225. All other bills and resolutions are being held, Mr. President. And just for the record, Mr. President, I read that with great care because if I would not have followed, uh, Mike Decker's, um, his adjustments, he would have been saying that. I gave you the correct information. So thank you, Mr. President.
Yeah, Mr. Decker is, uh, is gold, I tell you. I don't know what we'd do without him. Um, well, uh, nor- normally, uh, our next, uh, order of business would be public comment, but we do not have public comment today. Uh, the three individuals that were drawn in public comment in anticipation of the subsequent week. Um, but I must read, um, the process, uh, for the record, uh, for public comment for future, uh, participation by the public. So, public comment must concern matters on the second reading and final passes calendars for possible accident assessment and counsel. A speaker on any of those matters must sign up in order to testify. You must call 215-686-3406 by 3:00 PM the day before the session to sign up for public comment. When you call, you will take your name, phone number, the number of the legislative item you are commenting on, and whether you are in support of or against the legislation, and add your name to the list. Uh, we will then telephone each person on the list during the council session and invite them to our remote meeting. And under ideal circumstances, um, you will have three minutes to speak. However, uh, the time limit may vary from session to session. So, uh, that is for a- any future participants in our public comment session. Again, we will not have that today. Thank you very much. Um, we will move on to our next order of business, and we will now consider the bills and resolutions on the second reading and final passive calendar. Uh, Mr. Decker, please read the title of resolution number 220301.
A resolution authorizing the commissioner of public property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority, these conveying fees simple title to 1433, 1454, 1428, and 1443 North Myrtlewood Street, 719, 737, 739, 741, and 743 Montgomery Avenue, 2453 North Carlisle Street, 1532 North Marston Street, 2408 North 31st Street, 2410 North 34th Street, 2412 North 34th Street, 3013 West York Street, 3015 West York Street, and 3108 West York Street in the Fifth Councilmatic District of the City of Philadelphia.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker for a motion.
Thank you, Mr. President. On your behalf, sir, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved in properly second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and motion carries. Mr. Decker, please read the title of resolution number 220302.
A resolution recognizing and supporting the health and wellness of Black mamas and birthing people by acknowledging April 11 through 17, 2022, as Black Maternal Health Week.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson for a motion.
Thank you, Council President. I move the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved in properly second. All in favor of the resolution indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution has been adopted. Mr. Decker, uh, 220304.
A resolution recognizing and honoring the Children's Crisis Treatment Center on the occasion of its 50th anniversary of service and leadership in the City of Philadelphia.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Quinones Sanchez for a motion.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for its adoption. Second.
Thank you. It's been moved in properly second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, uh, 220305.
A resolution honoring and recognizing the service and leadership of retired nurse, activist, and current president of the Cecil B. Moore Freedom Fighters, Karen Asper Jordan, who has led a lifelong commitment to civil rights activism by protesting, picketing, marching, registering voters, and leading countless direct actions under the guidance and later inspiration of the legendary civil rights leader Cecil B. Moore.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Brooks for a motion.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of this resolution. Second.
It's been moved in properly second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, 220306.
A resolution honoring life, work, and accomplishments of Paula Peeble, whose dedication to advocacy, organizing, and leadership has empowered Philadelphia's movements for class and race equity.
Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Brooks for a motion.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution. Second.
It's been moved in properly second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker? Resolution 220307.
A resolution honoring and congratulating Women's History Month Champion of the Week and Chaney State College, not Chaney State College Lady Wolves on their 40th anniversary of historic 1982 NCAA Basketball Division One National Championship game.
Chair recognizes Councilman Thomas for a motion.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution. Second.
Thank you. It's been moved in properly second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, 220308.
A resolution authorizing the Hospital and Higher Education Facilities Authority of Philadelphia, formerly known as the Hospitals Authority of Philadelphia, Incorporated pursuant to the Municipality Authorities Act of 1945 as amended, and an ordinance of city council approved January 28, 1974, as amended to extend its term of existence.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass for a motion.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption. Second.
It's been moved in properly second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, 220309.
A resolution recognizing and honoring Judge Doris Smith Ribner for her years of service to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania as the first Black woman elected to a statewide judicial seat on the occasion of Women's History Month.
Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much, Council President. Uh, I move that resolution number 220309 be withdrawn. As I stated earlier, I am replacing that with another resolution. Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. It has been moved in second that resolution number 220309 be withdrawn. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and resolution number 220309 has been withdrawn. Mr. Decker, please read the title of bill number 22025.
An ordinance authorizing the Chief- An ordinance authorizing the Chief Information Officer for the city of Philadelphia on behalf of the city of Philadelphia to purchase licenses for email, cloud services, enterprise software, data services, security software, and other related competing products and services, all under certain terms and conditions.
Thank you. This bill had been read on two different days. The question now is shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call and roll.
Councilwoman Bass.
Aye.
Councilwoman Brooks.
Aye.
Councilman Dom.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gratié.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gim.
Aye.
Councilman Jones.
Aye.
Councilman O.
Aye.
Councilman O'Neil.
Aye.
Councilwoman Parker.
Aye.
Councilwoman Kino Nisánchez.
Aye.
Councilman Squilla. Councilman Squilla. Councilman Thomas.
Aye.
Council President Clark.
Aye. The ayes are fourteen and a zero zero. Majority of all members present have the voting affirmative. The bill passes.
Councilmember Clark, this is Councilmember Squilla. I'm unmuted. Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. Let the record reflect that Councilman Squilla is voting aye, and the record is fifteen. The ayes are zero for bill number two two zero two twenty-five. Mr. Decker, you have any additional resolution?
I do not, Mr. President.
Oh, sailing. All right. That concludes our legislative calendar for today. We will now move to our speeches. Prior to recognizing members regarding speeches, I will note for the record at this time that we will use the chat feature available in Microsoft's team to allow members to signify that they wish to be recognized. In order to comply with the Sunshine Act, the chat feature must only be used for this particular purpose. And with that said, are there any speeches on behalf of the minority? I do not see any speeches on behalf of the majority. Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. I am wearing a teal tie today. Today is two thousand twenty-two Teal Day, and this is in honor of Sexual Assault Awareness Month. And I know myself and a number of members of council will be participating in a press conference today at two o'clock in the mayor's reception room and really saluting the work of Women Organized Against Rape, which is now known as the Philadelphia Center Against Sexual Violence. We know this has been an issue in our city for some time, and the Philadelphia Center Against Sexual Violence was founded in nineteen seventy-one, and it was the first and only rape crisis center in the city of Philadelphia and one of the first in the nation. And when we think about the impact that COVID nineteen had around the world, but also here in the city of Philadelphia, this issue also played out and the pandemic played out in issues of sexual violence, and there was an increase in the services called upon for the Philadelphia Center Against Sexual Violence. I know on April twenty ninth, they'll be working with the Mayor's Commission on Women to actually have a human chain around City Hall to continue to uplift this issue and concern. So proud to stand with a lot of my colleagues and others around the city of Philadelphia to salute the work of the Philadelphia Center Against Sexual Violence as we acknowledge this month, April, being Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and that today being Teal Day here in the city of Philadelphia. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Don.
Thank you, Council President. I just want to take a moment to publicly thank my legislative counsel Laurel Gerbach for her work in city council as this is her last city council session today. Very sad, but happy for her. Since joining my office, though, Laurel's been tremendous, a great asset for us. She's helped me with everything, steering some great legislative efforts for all of us and honoring members of our community who mean a great deal to all of us, and she's been a great team member. She's represented this field of public service with nothing but complete professionalism and passion and tried to make the city a better place for all of us. Some of the things that come to mind that Laurel really was the author of and helped were the low income wage tax refund we did a few years ago, the streeteries and sidewalk cafe legislation. She worked on all of that and did it, and the wholesale legislation. You know, in many ways, I call myself the seagull. I fly in, I drop my, and then I leave. And she picks it all up. She does a great job. But she's also done more than that. She's kept our office together as a team. She's going on to the school district. And these, and by the way, all of our staff does a great job, not just Laurel, but everybody. But Laurel's been special to me, so I just want to wish her well. And she knows there's only one requirement I have for her for the school district, and that is I gave her twelve months to put in place mandatory teaching from K to twelve, financial literacy, technology, and entrepreneurship. Laurel, we wish you the best, and we will miss you, but good luck at your new position. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman. Yes, we do, but we will still interact with her. It's a good thing that she's standing in government and keeping the continuing her commitment to of service to the citizens of the city of Philadelphia. Good stuff. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to second Councilmember Dom whenever. I've communicated with her, Councilmember Dom, with any legislation that you've been working on. She's been professional, and the process was always seamless, so congratulations. Also, special thanks to Councilmember Derek Green for referencing Teal Day and the activities of Women Organized Against Rape, Philadelphia Center Against Sexual Violence. Our colleague, Councilmember Catherine Gilmore Richardson, is appropriately dressed today in her teal. I want to note for the record, Mr. President, that while I will not be able to attend today's press conference due to a longstanding prior commitment, I support this effort a thousand and one percent. When I was in the Pennsylvania House, I learned, and oh gosh, my age again, Jill Porter was a reporter for the Philadelphia Daily News, and she had written about a match dot com serial rapist. And we learned that Pennsylvania was the only state left in the nation. Even the federal government would allow experts to testify in cases of sexual assault, and in Pennsylvania, we could not. It took us six years, but we were able to change that law. So while I will not be there in person today, you all know that I am there in spirit. Finally, Mr. President, two last issues. When I was in Harrisburg, Mr. President, I learned very quickly that we would be judged by three very specific budgets when it came time to make a determination about whether or not the voters would hire us and or fire us. The first bucket, Mr. President, was our overall voting record. Because when you're in Harrisburg, you're voting on hundreds and hundreds of bills. So people would comb through your record to see what you voted for and what you voted against. Second bucket, Mr. President, was what legislative efforts did you champion? What did you take the lead on? And the third and final thing, which while I was in Harrisburg, my mentor, Ma Mary Intasco, made sure I understood was one of the most important buckets, and that was if you're not leveraging your vote in Harrisburg to secure resources to match funding secured by your local district council person. And no Councilmember Squilla talked about this yesterday. I think Councilmember Sanchez, they were talking about our ITF funding, but we usually need matching dollars. And if the relationship is such, you should always be able to go to your state rep or your state senator, and they can secure during the budget process matching dollars for projects. Well, this past weekend, State Representative Isabella Fitzgerald was the lead organizer for all of the cleanup efforts throughout Northwest Philadelphia in the ninth councilmatic district in particular. And I wanted to say a special thank you to her and to let her know I got many calls. I wasn't at every site. She was the person doing the work and leading the efforts, but I got many calls from people saying thank you for the work that was being done. So I want to say thank you to her for her leadership. Finally, to the people of Kitchen of Love Food Bank. I know that you knew that there was something different over the past few weeks. You saw the staff there attempting to keep the food bank going in the absence of Marlene Trice, whose vision and leadership and close connection, Mr. President, to Strawberry Mansion on every hundred of Thirty-first Street there. She started a food bank that has been recognized by the Eagles, the Philadelphia Corporation for the Agent, and so many other agencies as the model for allowing residents, those who are in need, to select what they want. Literally, the food bank sets up the food on the table, not necessarily prepared in a box, but you walk around and you choose what you want, giving the people in need of help even more dignity. Well, Mr. President, she took ill last week, had to be hospitalized, is still hospitalized. I want to say to her, to the family, to the extended family who work at Dorothy Emanuel Recreation Center with that Kitchen of Love, we're going to keep our boss lady, Marlene Trice, in our prayers, and we're going to keep the Kitchen of Love Food Bank going for those who need it. Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, colleagues.
Thank you, Council Leader. Our prayers go out. Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. It is budget season. This is when we, it's our Olympics, it's our time that we drill down on departments, agencies, programs to try to lift them up or guide them correctly and support them financially. I'm on, and I was proud of my colleagues yesterday going in on every department, asking the question, what are you doing to help the current crisis of reducing gun violence in the city of Philadelphia? What are you participating with program? And what are the results? And I was proud to listen to that whole budget process. But what I want to rise today about is sometimes departments can be penny wise and pound foolish. I talk about the school district of city of Philadelphia. I love when my colleague, Member Thomas, fights for, represents some of the positive accomplishments of sports teams that our youth are a part of. But it's like going in one pocket, taking it out of another pocket, putting it in when we charge nonprofits for these facilities. I am a track coach, retired and in a recovery. I love track and field. I coached my daughter's team. I coached Representative Cephas, who ran her way to U V A, you know, and I witnessed what Member Thomas continues to witness is the joy and redirection of energy of young people when they're put in situations fertile. But when you charge a track team, five thousand dollars to use the track out in back of King High School, a dirt track, unimproved, but essential to teach track and field, five thousand dollars, it is unacceptable. When you deal with teams from every one of our districts that have to face that, not only during outdoor, but during indoor, a lot of our young people during COVID could not participate. So where we had a dozen teams, we may have maybe eight teams citywide. Every year, I look forward to going to the Twenty First Ward where they have opening day, and a couple of dozen teams, all pristine, stand up there. We cannot continue to charge teams that are, in fact, participating in anti-violence measures, taking young people, putting them in a positive direction, and strangling them to death with these fees. Mr. President, colleagues, until we address this, I refuse to vote for another budget for the school district until they address this travesty to nonprofits, small teams, and our children who benefit from these facilities. Their parents pay the freight through the real estate taxes, and then we charge them again. That's double dipping in the worst way to the most vulnerable and most important investment we have. I said yesterday at the budget hearing that a city benefits when old men and women plant trees they will never experience the shade of. When you coach a kid, you may never see them become the men and women that they are going to be, but know that you have participated in raising strong youth as opposed to fixing broken men and women. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman, you you need to put together a book because you come up with some really, really.
I, I gotta credit other people with some of the well-placed quotes.
Doesn't matter. Doesn't matter. You can put, you can make it a footnote, Councilman. The fact of the matter is you bring it to the public, public view. Thank you so much, Councilman. You are so right. Chair recognizes Councilman Thomas.
Good morning, everybody. Thank you, Council President. I'm gonna be very, very brief. I just wanted to announce that tomorrow we're doing a food giveaway in partnership with Councilmember Bass from ten to twelve at Triumph Baptist Church. We did it last year. We have a significant, one of the bigger issues that we face in the city of Philadelphia, and we have a lot of food to give away. So please spread the word. Make sure folks that are in need come out as we want to give the food away. And what I will say real quick, Councilmember Jones, is a much worse problem than what you realize. It's not just the issue of the organizations getting access to the spaces. It's also the issue of being able to provide free programming in general across the city of Philadelphia. When I grew, when I was growing up, you know, you could participate in a basketball league or be a part of a summer program, and it would be free. We just don't have the amount of free programs that we once had in the past. And so that was one of the things that I challenged the administration on when we were looking at the budget conversation that you were talking about yesterday and just the amount of free programs and initiatives that we have in the city of Philadelphia. I'll stop right there. Someone's telling me my time is up. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman. Thank you so much for bringing that to our attention. Councilman, where's that location again? For food?
I'm sorry. The location is Triumph Baptist Church, which is Germantown at Huntington Park. And we'll be there at ten o'clock tomorrow morning until all the food is gone. So we're looking forward to that, and hopefully we can help a lot of people in need.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. That concludes our speeches for the minority and the majority today, and the chair recognizes Councilman Jones for motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that council stand adjourned until Thursday, April twenty first, twenty twenty-two at ten A M. Second.
Thank you. It's been moved appropriately second. That the council stand adjourned until Thursday, April twenty first, twenty twenty-two, ten A M. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed. Ayes have it. Motion carries. I want to thank you all very much, and again, please be safe. Thank you all. Love you, guys.